Okay, Gillian, Kurtz, Mars, Randolph, Javas, David, Council President, we have a quorum and a sample of such a decision.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have invocation by Reverend Collins A. Days Senior, Pastor Second Baptist Church.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, we do thank you and we honor you for your goodness and your mercy toward us. Thank you for grace, thank you for strength, and thank you also for the challenges in which we face. Today, Lord, as we gather, we pray for your guidance. We pray, Lord, that you would give us a heart of compassion for our people. We pray, Lord, for wisdom and understanding, and draw our city leaders together as we give you thanks for them, endow them with patience, endow them, oh God, with cohesion and understanding of the needs of our city. Give them the ability to deliberate correctly and rightly divide that which should be done for the betterment of our city. In your name we pray. Amen.
As a footnote, this meeting has been provided as required by law by the City Clerk, sent to the Press and the Philadelphia Inquirer on January 6, 2017, and published on January 9, 2017, and to the Star Desert on January 19, 2017, and published on January 21, 2017. A list of the meetings for the Council of the City of Atlantic City, including notice of the meeting scheduled for August 9, 2017 at 5:00 p.m. in the Hank Kiner Council Chambers, Room 206, City Hall, 1301 Backright Boulevard, and also a copy of said notice was posted by the City Clerk on the bulletin board, main lobby, press floor, and second floor. All of the aforementioned applies with NJSA 10, colon, 4-6, S. T., known as the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Law, and NJSA 40, colon, 69A-179. This is a regular council meeting of the City of Atlantic City. Before we begin, please be aware of our rules in this chamber. All persons are to be seated unless all seats are filled, in which case you may stand against the wall in order of fashion. We are asking that all gentlemen remove their masks. All persons are to remain quiet during these proceedings. This is so that everyone is able to hear what is going on. Please turn off all cell phones or accessories to silent. No one shall speak unless they are ready to do so by the Council President. Shouting, interrupting, speaking out of turn, or acting disorderly in any fashion will not be tolerated, and anyone doing so will be removed from the meeting. When and if you are invited to the microphone to speak, please state your name and address. You will be allotted three minutes for comment. Please respect the time for other persons and end your speech within the three minutes allowed. If it is your intention to ask a question of council, you will be permitted to ask a maximum of two questions. Your questions are to be clearly stated, and after the questions are asked, you are to take your seats. The Council President will determine if the question can be answered and by whom. Finally, please understand that there will be no personal attacks or name calling. If you do so, your time will immediately be cut short and you may then ask to leave. Reports and recommendations from the mayor, ordinance numbers 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, 2017, were signed by the mayor on July 13, 2017. Council President, have we committee reports?
First. Information Technology, Health and Human Services, Licensing and Inspections Committee met August 2nd. Among the items that we discussed, I started in information technology. We were looking at a variety of GPS and dash camera solutions to try and see what technology upgrades we might be able to do that would help us lower our risk, which would result in potentially lower insurance costs, increase our efficiency and our fuel costs, and keep an eye every now and then you get these reports about people driving city vehicles out of town and they're not on official business, and something like a GPS solution might be able to help us in keeping a closer eye on that. So we're looking at some of the options there. Last year, we have passed the Transparency Act that mandated we should start putting our meetings online and on demand. It's taken a while to get the technology piece set up, but we had a review of the piece of technology that looks like we're going to add, something called BoxCast video capture, and we look like we're very close to being able to obtain that and then install it so that way you and the public will be able to watch our meetings online if you're not able to make it here in person due to a work or a personal conflict. Under Health and Human Services, we had a review of decibel levels. There've been some complaints about noise coming from some places along the beach, and looking at what the decibel levels are and try to identify some solutions to deal with that issue. Under Licensing and Inspections, did a general review of the mercantile code as well as the enforcement. There's an item tonight, it's actually under New Business, although we had talked about it in committee and approved it. It's to bring our city code in line with the New Jersey Predatory Towing Act. There've been some people that have been victims of over-aggressive towing from private properties, and there are some protections that are in state law that are not reflected in our code that are being offered tonight for first reading in New Business. That's all, Mr. President. Oh, pardon me, there's one other item. I actually defer to Councilman Randolph that deals with residential parking.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilman Randolph, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public Safety and Public Works Committee met Wednesday, August 1st, and I'm going to defer to you on the drone presentation that we had with Dr. Kirk. But we want tonight for the Ninety City Police Department, resolution approval for cops and shop grant. We want to accept the grant from the Skywatch and other equipment that is 100% reimbursable. We have a change order on tonight for lawman supply company, and that's for firearms. The Ninety City Fire Department has purchased an AED and a CPR response kit, and that's on tonight. No public works. And what Councilman Kurtz is talking about tonight, we did extensive research and from a recommendation from Licensing and Inspection Director Finch, we've had a problem with parking in front of the flagship taking the residence parking. So we came up with residential parking, and it will be from Atlantic and Madison on the east side of New Hampshire Avenue. We've been toying with this for a long time, and this is what we've come up with, and I know there'll probably be questions. I've been getting calls, I've been receiving calls, and we have to make decisions, and we try to do what's best for the community. So after doing extensive research, that's the best that we can come up with right now, hopefully, we can get some resolution from the flagship. We're working with them, Director, myself, and other committee members, and tonight, that's on the agenda. So that's my report, and thank you very much.
To give the Council and the citizens an update from the Human Resources Department, we had a new hire for the Human Resources team. As you know, we had expressed that they were doing more with less, and so I want to thank the administration as well as the state for listening to our plea. So we now have a new hire in terms of the Assistant Director of Human Resources, and his name is Alex Waiters. The transfer to actual position is still open, we need to feel that because it is vital to making sure everything is efficient and sufficient when it comes to meeting the transfer to actual goals that he set forth as a city and a council. The Employee Assistance Program has been restored, which is a great thing, because now we can, our employees can go and get the things they need in terms of retirement and other things, et cetera. And the biggest thing I wanted to let everybody know, we did our prescription renew for this year, and resulted in a $1,000, $1,122 credit. If you know that in 2013, I think, or '14, we paid an additional $2 million. So this year, we will save, and we will get a credit of $1 million, and I could thank Mr. Tucker and CEB, who broke the record, for making sure this happens, and anything we can save is a great deal for the City of Atlantic City, and we will have a $1 million savings where in 2014, '13, we paid $2 million extra each year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mars, is CEB, is that Kurtz Lackton?
Yes, that is him. Everybody should have gotten an attitude of him.
Speedship with the rest, that our employees are not bad people, and we're not involved in anything you read in newspapers. I called Mr. Lackton six months ago to keep an eye on the usage of our prescription plans and everything else, and it just shows that our people did the right thing for the most...
It was back before, you know, all the years we argued about a cup of coffee and all that, nitties, and we finally was able to get it broken, and the broker was finally able to get us a significant savings and a credit as to spending $2 million for those years, each year.
Bravo.
Before I start my report, let me just underscore the fact that Kurtz Lackton is a local business person and an Atlantic City resident. I just wanted to indicate that. I'm not going to say Council President from the third world, but I won't say that, but I think we should let people know that we have talented, professional business people in Atlantic City. My report, I'll start off with Resolution 480, which is for gardens basing, something that we've been working on for a while, but my colleagues have indicated to me that they have some concerns, and they have substantive and legitimate concerns, so I've asked them, and they've agreed to get those concerns to me, Mr. President, and we will work on it, and hopefully have that ready for September 6th committee. I thank all my colleagues for their input in regard to that important resolution. Our committee met on August 2nd for our regular committee meeting, and we have some resolutions that I would ask for support that are on. Several of them are really boilerplate and have no economic impact on the city. In fact, the first four have no economic impact on the city. We have Tropicana, which is going to ask to put a bridge across from Tropicana to the, the county they took over.
Chelsea.
Chelsea, thank you, Councilman. Again, has no economic impact on the city. The microgrid study has no economic impact on the city, and the resolutions authorizing us for development has no economic impact on the city. 474, we asked for the sale of surplus property, which hopefully will bring in some money to the city. Those are the resolutions emanating from our committee meeting, and I would ask for support. That's my report.
All right. Counselor, I would be remiss for you, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Atlanta's neighbors as a part of that team, NHR, that, you know, helped us get to where we got to get to the savings. I just wanted to let you know.
Council President, just want to report to the administration and Chief of Police Chief, we're getting a lot of calls from churches on Pacific Avenue. These people with addiction are completely taking over Pacific Avenue, they're actually running into churches now. One priest has nothing but praise for your police officer, was concerned because as quick as they pull away, they're out front fighting, they've now taken to walking inside the church screaming, there's a, "I'll go over to places with you," drug houses behind it, as quick as your guys raid it, they're filled up with new drug people in there, and Mr. Cunningham, I really encourage you to try and stay down here on a Friday night and go out on our streets on Pacific Avenue on a Friday night after 12 o'clock at night, and see how bad it's gotten. It's the worst in my entire life that I've seen Pacific Avenue. This addiction problem is destroying this tourism district right now. It's totally out of control, how many are up there. As quick as our cops go to one call, they're two blocks away, making more sales and doing whatever it is that they do. Also, Council President, I'm a little concerned, maybe you could tell me if any committee has, has the administration brought to any committee yet the findings of Judge Mendez over the parking meters, because you only have 120 days, and the fact that it hasn't been brought to us in almost 30 days now, unless it's been brought to one of your committees that I don't know about, is starting to get alarming because the clock's ticking, and we have to decide what we're going to do as council and administration. And the fact that this ruling happened over 30 days ago, and nobody from council has been given a report on a ruling from a superior court judge on that is kind of alarming to me. So if you could please check into that. Also, we were going to get a list, especially now that schools and colleges are starting to get started, we were supposed to be getting a list of all the people that have gotten scholarships, and it's going to be handled through the Atlanta County, the ACC...
ACCC.
ACCC, excuse me. I don't know, have you received that yet, Council President?
No, I haven't received any.
Could you follow up on that, please? Thank you. Council, you follow up on both of those things, please? This clock's ticking.
Council President, there's one item that Councilman Randolph mentioned from this committee that we were working on together, and he deferred to me on it. We have this idea about possibly implementing drones to help our lifeguards after hours monitor the beaches. We've just been reading about way too many drownings that are happening at night, and there was, at Councilman Randolph's committee, there was a drone specialist that came in and was going over with some options with our chiefs about how you can better patrol the water, and like if you want to visualize it, you have a couple guys or girls or ladies that are on the beach patrolling it after hours, and you have to drive up and down on one of those quad four-wheelers. Well, if you get one of them certified in drone operations, then the one person can man the drone and just go up and down the ocean, control it, and then when they spot people going in the water at 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night, then you can deploy the one or two people that you have to dive in the water. So that was discussed in committee, and hopefully, you know, the administration and the state will permit us to implement that, and maybe even first on the East Coast with having that great safety solution to help prevent drownings. Thank you.
And Reverend Finance, the big ticket item, which was reported from the state and the city as well, is the $80 million for the bond that will help us settle all remaining tax bills, which is good to the future of Atlantic City, because as you know, pro legislation under the, you know, casinos from throwing tax bills. Contrary to popular belief from the state of New Jersey, that, you know, this is wasteful spending, you know, we're spending out of control, we're spending like drunken sellers, when it's not the case, when the fact that they've been here since 2010, overlooking the finances. This is just the test of the times that we went through, and at least it looks like that the tough part is over, and it should lead to much needed fiscal sustainability for residents of Atlantic City in form of a tax decrease that you receive this year. And you have my commitment as Reverend Finance Chair that moving forward, we're going to hold everyone accountable to make sure that we do the best job that we can on behalf of the taxpayers and keep those tax bills getting lower, in partnership with the Board of Education and the county, because remember, we can have a 20% tax decrease, and, you know, they can spend out of control over there, and you'll say, "Well, what are you talking about?" But, you know, you have my commitment to do that moving forward. And there were some other issues with Reverend Finance, we had some Sandy Grant monies come in, but I wanted to alert the public about something on the agenda, because I actually got a couple of phone calls. You see on your agenda, it says civil action, Martin Small. I'm not suing the city, so relax. What that was, I exercised my right to file an election challenge, and after much deliberations and, you know, looking at the totality of the situation, I decided to withdraw my challenge. And because the city's involved in the election process through the clerk's office, the city clerk, the county clerk, state attorney general, my opponent, everyone was notified of my suit, so I am not suing the city, that's just the standard procedure. So I just wanted to let everybody know what that is about. Okay? All right. Now, before...
Mr. President, can I say something? Basically, the last, the last couple council meetings ago, we talked about Fairmount Avenue. Ever since that, there's, there was a couple incidents, accidents, was one, administration looking to address it. Maybe, 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 you know, just maybe a couple suggestions, was maybe a car well with a yellow line around the corner, considering the, the uncommon cars, because it's bent, there's a deep curve. Another thing, maybe looking to put a stop sign with, with, by the programs to this. There's another thing is, another thing is that, where's the bulkhead when you place them? Is there any, can you give me a schedule on that?
Yeah, yeah, we're working on that. Actually, we have the engineer here this evening to have an additional discussion about it. Councilman Kurtz says I also am part of that. Moving forward, we're attempting to recruit the funds at the point where the accident occurred from the insurance company affiliated with the driver of the vehicle, and putting the, the records and financials to prepare for that.
Do you have any comments after the meeting, have any discussions?
Okay, thanks.
Jason, the engineer also discussed the conversation we had around, what was it, things to put in the roads?
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps. Or variation of...
The engineer.
The mics. The engineer and the Director of Public Works have been having ongoing discussions about where to put the speed bumps, and whether it is going to be wrongful strips, or what's the appropriate solutions, and the questions that you have raised at the council meeting. They're both here, we can certainly have a discussion about that, Council.
All right, and before we get into the resolutions and recommendations, I'm calling Evan Sanchez for a presentation.
Council President, we need to...
Thank you very much, Council President. I'm going to give it to Elizabeth Murphy, the Director of Creative New Jersey, to start and I'll finish.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Council President, members of City Council. Thanks for giving us a few minutes on your agenda today to just share some news about the developments of the Atlantic City Community Fund. Thank you. So, can you hear me? What, maybe I'll just use this here. So I'm just going to speak for about a minute, I'm going to give you a little bit of a background on the Atlantic City Community Fund, how it's come into being, and then Evan's going to share a couple of more details with you. So some of you in this room worked with us at Creative New Jersey when we launched our Creative Atlantic City Call to Collaboration, and we've been working since that time, that was in 2014. We've been working with a number of folks here in town on some other projects and helping to advance a dialogue and some community-led initiatives that are taking hold. So our work at Creative New Jersey, which were a project of the Geraldine R. Dodge Foundation, part of what we want to be able to do is to help communities build capacity. So our friends and colleagues at the Community Foundation of South Jersey were part of our work here in Atlantic City, and working with them and the Dodge Foundation, we wanted to see if we could establish a community fund here in Atlantic City, which would be for the city, by the city, directed by people who live here, by residents and some other stakeholders. So through those conversations, the Community Foundation, we have one of their board members here with us today, Teresa DiVietro, thank you, Teresa. The Community Foundation and the Dodge Foundation have agreed to seed this fund with an initial investment of $30,000. So working with that money, we've been talking with Evan and a couple of the other community members who we know here on putting together the framework around what the community fund might do, who might be involved in the leadership of it, and the kinds of projects that it can support here in Atlantic City. I'll tell you briefly, a community fund is not a standalone organization, it'll be legally housed and managed by the Community Foundation of South Jersey, which is exactly what community foundations all around the country do. So this is a model that has proven to build capacity which is resident-driven in communities all around the country. The purpose of a community fund is to organize and mobilize a community's capacity and resources to advance causes identified by and for the residents. So I'll just tell you briefly, and then I'm going to hand it over to Evan, that I want to give you an example of some community funds around the country. In Dillard, Nebraska, with a population of 287 people, with a median income of $37,000, they have assets in their community fund of $350,000. Right? In Keith County, Nebraska, with a population of 8,900 and a median income of $32,000, they have assets in their fund of $800,000. In Pickaway, Ohio, with a population of 54,000, so a little bit more than what we have here in Atlantic City, and a median income of $42,000, they have assets in their community fund of $6.5 million. This is possible. So in closing, I want to say that we want to be able to launch this fund with at least a $500,000 investment, a million would be better, but the purpose of this fund is to make sure that this fund is sustainable and perpetual. So we want to make sure that it has enough money to be invested, so that year after year, as the Community Foundation manages this fund, along with the many others that they successfully manage, there will be money that can be granted to the community, made the decisions made by people in the community of what to do with the fund. So, you know, on behalf of the Community Foundation of South Jersey and Creative New Jersey and the Dodge Foundation, we're really excited to be at this point today to talk to you about this fund. We're committed to stay through to the end and lend our support to this, and now I'm going to turn it over to Evan, who's going to talk a little bit more about just the mission and the details of the working group and the advisory board. Thank you.
Thank you again, Council President, City Council, and Elizabeth. The Atlantic City Community Fund was established to strengthen the community of Atlantic City for current and future generations. It's meant to promote active community involvement and philanthropy to address community issues. Its mission is to foster private giving, strengthen service providers, improve conditions of Atlantic City, and most importantly, it is for the community, by the community. To date, the working group, which was established by community member submissions, have completed the following. We've established the fund's bylaws, which will guide the fund moving forward as it builds its advisory board and distributes funds. It's created a Board of Advisors questionnaire, which will be distributed across the Atlantic City community starting tomorrow, and we've notified civic leaders of the fund. We've also built a website, accommunityfund.org. Again, that's accommunityfund.org, with an overview of the fund and the Board of Advisors questionnaire. So the Board of Advisors that we're establishing will include representation from all six of the wards, and be made up of 70% Atlantic City residents, which will be tasked with guiding the fund. It's going to be three major committees, the Executive Committee, the Marketing and Growth Committee, which is going to seek to raise funds and awareness of the funds, and the Grant Making Committee, which will monitor and assess the community needs and make recommendations for the full board to grant, to issue the grants. And 70% of the Grant Making Committee must be Atlantic City residents to once again ensure funds are for the community, by the community. The next steps are for community members that are interested, that are here tonight, that are watching on TV, or tomorrow will be notified through the press, to go to accommunityfund.org, accommunityfund.org, and complete the questionnaire as we build the Board of Advisors as the next step. Happy to turn it back, answer questions?
Mr. Council President, I have a question. If this is an organization set up to benefit the city, and if it's using the framework of "for us, by us," why is the representation 70% and not 100%?
So the...
The representation being 70% of people that are living in Atlantic City, there are other stakeholders that own businesses, and our other community members run nonprofits that may not live in Atlantic City. We thought it was important to have all of the stakeholders included, but we wanted to make sure the representation was vast majority Atlantic City residents.
Okay, and is, will there be a framework or a safeguard to suggest that whoever is in the hierarchy of this board is primarily made of Atlantic City residents? is primarily made of Atlantic City residents and not people outside? The reason I'm saying is because the CRDA was created, in essence, to be some sort of, I'd say, a hub for development. And there was so much thought that Atlantic City would be so involved in it. And then we ultimately got pushed all the way out through politics and what have you. So, we're, you know.
That's explicitly in the bylaws of the fund, that 70% mandate forever?
At least 70%.
At least 70%, at a minimum.
Okay.
But I, I think when you look at it, the CRDA was always the governor's equipment. So, we never had a chance to do it. But this mandates that we do 70%. So, we're talking about how CRDA was created to assist in Atlantic City. It was created to give purpose to the government, which overstepped the United States. So, I, I think 70%.
Also too, I want to commend you and the group. Because this is just one step. We see that people in the community can help with some of the things going on in the community. We've been very engaged for the most part for the past three years. Really brought nothing but bright light, which is involvement of the arts. So, I'm going to start there. Can part of that 30,000 be utilized for the 48 block process?
So, the, the, the Grant Making Committee, basically, that will be established from the Board of Advisors, will be responsible for sort of sourcing opportunities and then bringing it to the full board. So, you can't speak to the specifics, but absolutely, we'll be looking at arts initiatives, 48 blocks in particular, to support and other initiatives similar to it.
And what are some of your, what are some of your ones that you're looking to engage investors to donate to that fund?
So, we're in the early stages of the fundraising process, and we want to build out the Board of Advisors first because we think that'll be an asset as we go to funders. So, that is really the next step that we've identified, is people going to accommunityfund.org, filling out the questionnaire and submitting to be a Board of Advisor member. And then we will go to the fundraising step as.
Evan, before you sit down, quick. How many Board of Advisors do you envision, and what's your time?
Nine to 15 Board of Advisor members. And we'd like to start to fill that roster over the next several weeks and be fundraising by the fall. So, we'd like to do this quickly, there's no reason to wait. We want to make this public, we want to make it as transparent as possible. We want everybody to know about it, submit, and then sort of determine that board and go raise the funds and start to grant.
Excellent idea.
All right, thanks.
Thanks Evan. Appreciate it.
Communications and petitions are listed on the agenda, will not be read into the record. Brings us to resolutions of recognition. We just have several which are here to receive a presentation.
Is anyone not here?
All right, now a motion to vote on 419 and 420.
Move it.
Move by Randolph, second by Kurtz. All vote.
Okay, resolution 419 is a resolution of condolence to the family of Reginald Stone. And resolution 420 is a condolence to the family of Mario Bon Giovanni. Do you have a motion?
We have a motion.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Move it.
Say Kurtz.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. And individually, we have resolution 415. This is a resolution to commend Eddie Morgan, founder of Jazz for Kids and You.
Move it.
Second.
And whereas Jazz for Kids and You, community organization founded in 2012 by Eddie Morgan, an Atlantic City resident and professional musician, helps students develop and express their musical ability and showcase their talent. And whereas Jazz for Kids and You pairs professional jazz musicians with students who are taught to use various musical instruments. And whereas Jazz for Kids and You is funded through private donations. And whereas teaching seminars are presented in four summer sessions at Oscar E. Clinton Jr. Waterfront Park on New Hampshire Avenue in Atlantic City. And whereas the teaching sessions conclude with a free concert featuring students and jazz masters. Whereas Jazz for Kids and You provides a great service to the community. Now therefore be resolved that city council of the city of Atlantic City proudly salutes Jazz for Kids and You and hereby recognizes and commends Eddie Morgan for his outstanding commitment on behalf of local youth.
Will that be all council, council? Make that all council?
All council? Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes. Eddie, I don't know.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small.
Let me ask the solicitors in the conflict, because many people don't know that I play first trumpet.
I wasn't going to bring it up, buddy.
You can affirm that.
I was affirming that. I didn't want to bring it up.
Yes.
Obviously, we know he's better to this horn.
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we have a presentation.
Thank you so much. I don't come alone, as you can see.
Don't see any interest, though.
We didn't come to play. Thank you, everyone. Let me just say thank you to, first of all, third world council, Kalisha Bosh, for bringing forth the idea of this resolution and all the council members in support of the resolution. We thank you. Before you ask my team, or part of the team that helps to put this together, Hakim Waters, who's actually a Camden resident, originally went to Camden High School, but transferred to Atlantic City. My wife Carolyn and Diane Jowels, community sister. Are part of our team. Asking from our team today is Keith Harris, who's our technology guru, and Brian Jackson, a team member who also helps him recruit. Is that it? That's it. We do have, oh, my sister Evan. Where are you, Evan? Come up. Okay. The easiest thing for you to do, if you're interested, is to go to YouTube, put in Jazz for Kids, that's a number four, kids with a Z, and you, as our T-shirt says, Jazz for Kids and You, and you can see video presentations that we covered this summer, as well as back in 2012 when we started. We initially wanted to do, my idea was to bring forth professionals from all of the area, Philadelphia included, which we did that first year, to teach young people about jazz. Recruit, it is a very difficult thing for summertime, getting kids out. We've tried to focus on this, and it's been a challenge, but we do see the light at the end of the tunnel. And most of the students now are all my students or former students of mine that I've taught in Pleasantville Schools and one in Atlantic City. And we have a student that came from Ocean City. So, we were able to procure six students on four, three of the dates this summer. And you'll see that evident in the videos on YouTube and on my Facebook page, titled the same thing, or my Eddie Morgan page. So, we are proud to say that we want to move forward into 2018. And we will be doing fundraisers and so forth to continue our work. But we appreciate the exposure of this event this, this year. We thank you again.
Evan, you and I were prepared with that. Yes, and we were pretty good, bro. Unlike the council president.
Lot of bad people in there, Eric, what's that? I'm going to continue, I'm going to continue to be professional.
Resolution 416 has a resolution to recognize 101 Women Plus.
Move it.
Second by Chabaz, and second by Randolph, and Gilliam.
Make it all council?
All council?
Whereas the 101 Women Plus organization was founded to assist the mayoral campaign of the late James L. Osrey. And whereas 101 Women Plus was founded by Dorothy W. Dorrington, an outstanding educator and civic leader in Atlantic City. And whereas 101 Women Plus has raised and distributed a great number of scholarships to encourage local youngsters to attend college. And whereas the social and civic initiatives started by 101 Women Plus has benefited our community. And whereas 101 Women Plus continues to provide civic leadership, social activism, and community projects for the benefit of Atlantic City. And now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Atlantic City hereby recognizes and commends 101 Women Plus for their history of involvement in Atlantic City and for all of their good work. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we have a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Judah Bijna Dorrington, and I have the pleasure and the honor of being the president of 101 Women Plus. First of all, we want to thank Councilman Chabaz and the rest of the city council and administrative team of Atlantic City for acknowledging and recognizing 101 Women Plus. Our organization, as was stated, was founded by my mother, Dorothy W. Dorrington. And we are entering our 35th year in doing civic service and also providing educational scholarships for Atlantic City high school students who have already been accepted into college. Thank you so much for supporting 101 Women Plus for this 34 years, and we look forward to going into our 35th year. In September, we will be having our annual membership drive. So, please think about and look forward to seeing our announcement so that anyone, 101 Women Plus, our mission is to enhance the quality of life for the citizenry of Atlantic City. We are a nonpartisan organization, and our members are of every race, religion, creed, opinion that we may have in Atlantic City. Also, people wonder what is plus, 101 Women Plus? The pluses are the men. We don't have any of our men here this evening. Mr. Michael Johnson was here, but he had to leave. But we do have men also. So, anybody who is interested in our mission, and also 101 Women Plus has also been a place where people who had a voice or wanted a voice. Everybody is not one to come to city council meetings and speak their piece or go to other meetings or let their, their city councilors or the city government know what's on their mind or what they want. But 101 Women Plus is a place for you to come and let us know. And what we do is that we go to our city councilors and we go to the government. And anybody else who has, as somebody just said, is a stakeholder in Atlantic City, and let them know what is on our minds. And that is one of the, one of the main things that 101 Women Plus has done for the 34 years that it's been in existence. So, if you want to become a member, look for our announcement. It'll be coming, we'll be having it sometime in this September. And come on forth. We're also very interested in leadership. And right now, we are trying to back the leadership of young people in Atlantic City. Our membership, some of these people who are here have been in this organization for 34 years. And we're trying to develop the youth leadership and the young people leadership and the ideas that young people have about this city and the things that they want to do. So, if you know young people, please get in touch with us. You can reach us on Facebook at 101 Women Plus Inc. We also have, we also have email, 101womenplusinc@gmail. Or you can call me at 508-561-5074, if you're interested in becoming a member. So, once again, thank you so much, Atlantic City, and also the members and officers of 101 Women Plus for making this past 34 years a success. And we look forward to a successful 35th year enhancing the quality of life for the citizens of Atlantic City. Thank you.
Resolution 424 is a resolution of condolence to the family of Tally Thomas.
Move it.
Second. Move by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Make it all council? Make it all council?
All council. Whereas Tally Thomas was born on June 10th, 1934, and departed this life on July 18th, 2017. And whereas referred to by many as one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet, Tally attended public school and graduated from Atlantic City High School in 1952. And whereas Tally Thomas attended Temple University, where he received a DS degree in pharmacology. In 1960, he was the only black man in his class. Tally provided almost 35 years of dedicated devoted service to Atlantic Care and pharmacists, senior staff registered pharmacists and pharmacists in charge. And whereas Tally Thomas was the first black pharmacist in Atlantic City Medical Center. Early in his career, he was hired by African-American physicians who opened ethical pharmacy on Arctic Avenue in Atlantic City. Whereas in 2007, Tally Thomas was honored by Atlantic Care's Black Heritage Committee as a trailblazer in his field. And whereas Tally Thomas was an active member of Jethro Memorial Presbyterian Church for many years, where he served as a trustee, assistant treasurer, and choir member. He was also treasurer of the Atlantic City branch of the NAACP for several years. And whereas the council of the city of Atlantic City desires to pay tribute to the life and legacy of Tally Thomas and proudly recognizes his many accomplishments and significant contributions. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Atlantic City hereby joins in the mourning of the passing of Tally Thomas and expresses heartfelt condolences to his family and friends. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we have a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. It's still on within a couple weeks, since like at the past. He was missed. It was sudden, but he had a really good life and he loved Atlantic City. He loved his work as a pharmacist at Atlantic Care Regional Medical Center. And we're glad that he didn't suffer for a long time, he was 83. And he had a really, really good life. And he went quickly, and the nurses tell me peacefully. And I hope they weren't just technically there to make you feel better. But, um, he will be missed and we thank you so much for recognizing his contribution to the city. Thank you.
Resolution four thirty-two is a resolution waiving all fees for the Uptown For Life Annual Reunion.
Second. Can make it all counts? All counts?
Whereas the city council is tasked with promoting events for the good and welfare of the citizens of Atlantic City. And whereas the Uptown For Life is a community organization that promotes the hometown camaraderie of uptown living and celebrates those who call it home. And whereas the Uptown For Life reunion is scheduled for Sunday, August twentieth two thousand seventeen at Garbage Basin. And whereas the council of the city of Atlantic City shall waive the requirements of fees including insurance as a sign of goodwill and support for the hundreds of people who call our uptown communities home. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Atlantic City that the city shall waive all fees required for this event. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Resolution four fifty-nine is a resolution waiving all fees for the Bangladesh Mela Festival.
Move it. Second.
Move by Shabazz, second by Gillian. Make it all counts. All counts?
All counts. Whereas the city council is tasked with promoting events for the good and welfare of the citizens of the city of Atlantic City. And whereas the Bangladesh Association of South Jersey is a community organization that promotes the cultural heritage of Bangladesh. And whereas the Bangladesh Association will hold the Bangladesh Mela on August sixteenth two thousand seventeen at San Castle Stadium. The Bangladesh Mela is a village fair celebration which promotes the cultural heritage of Bangladesh and is observed across the United States each year. And whereas the Bangladesh Mela will bring entertainment, food, musical talent, creative works, and will otherwise showcase the talents of the Bangladesh community. And whereas this festival will promote cultural exchange between all residents and visitors to Atlantic City and will, will enhance the image of the city. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Atlantic City that the city shall waive all fees required for this event. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine being affirmative. Resolution four sixty-nine, supporting Senate Bill S seventeen sixty-eight designating the right for individuals to sell home baked goods.
Move it.
Second. Move by Shabazz, second by Randolph.
Whereas individuals have a right to support themselves and their families. And whereas unnecessary regulations at the state and local level often impede the ability of individuals to do so. And whereas selling home baked goods or other cottage foods has proven to be an effective method of earning income for oneself and one's family. And whereas individuals are committed to currently give away home baked food or cottage food for charitable purposes. And whereas New Jersey is the last state deuing which does not allow the sale of home baked goods or cottage foods. And whereas the New Jersey Assembly has passed the New Jersey Home Bakers Bill, which is currently before the Senate as NJ S hyphen seventeen sixty-eight, which allows for the regulation and sale of home baked goods. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council for the city of Atlantic City strongly supports any effort to bring New Jersey up the farm with all other states in regards to allowing for the sale of home baked goods and cottage foods and urges the state senate to pass Bill S dash one seven sixty-eight. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine being affirmative. Resolution four seventy-six, recognition of Arnette Perrin McLean on the occasion of her one hundredth birthday.
Move it. Second.
Move by Gillian, second by Delgado. Make it all counts.
All counts. Whereas Arnette Perrin McLean was born on August seventeenth nineteen seventeen and has been a resident of Atlantic City since nineteen fifty-six after her marriage to Herbert Perrin. And whereas Arnette was an entrepreneur who owned the HR restaurant and best boarding home on St. Catherine's Place. And whereas Arnette was a foster parent, she retired from the city of Atlantic City as a crossing guard. And whereas Arnette was the founder of the Pentecostal Church of Gospel Ministries. And whereas on August seventeenth two thousand seventeen, Arnette Perrin McLean will celebrate a very special milestone, her one hundredth birthday. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Atlantic City joins in the celebration of the one hundredth birthday of Arnette Perrin McLean and wishes her joy and happiness on this blessed occasion. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine being affirmative and have a presentation. That's her.
Um, um, excuse me, after, after, I dare you. After, after the presentation, we want you to come up here and, uh, take a picture with us, cause you put us all to shame.
Give it to me, let's speak.
Let's speak first.
Would you like to speak first?
She's a hundred, let's speak.
Praise the Lord, everybody. The crazy thing, God's a hero, that he got to walk me down through the years. Now through the years, I've been, but I'm still waiting for God to do it. Y'all sit up here, darling, that I keep on praising the Lord. I'm a minister now and a apostle, opening up churches and doing wedding and marriage. Anybody here want to get married today? And I'm honored to thank my family for being so patient with me. He had me, cause it wasn't easy. It wasn't easy, but they stuck right in it. Like, I was thinking, that's my daughter, is she beautiful? I want to thank the councilors.
God bless you.
I've been working on the Atlantic City for many years. I come here nineteen forty-three, and I never give a single trouble.
One hundred and three, one, two, and three.
One hundred!
She's only sixty.
She told us she looking for a husband.
That's fun, y'all go.
You got it. She's legal now. The question remains, right? Can't God do it?
After Resolution four seventy-seven, this is a resolution to recognize St. James AME Church Second Annual Cristalian.
Move it. Second.
Okay.
Whereas the council of the city of Atlantic City is tasked with the responsibility to recognize the individuals and organizations that contribute to the betterment of Atlantic City. And whereas the Cristalian is designed to provide participants with spiritual, critical thinking, and social and economic skills in order to enhance faith, build character and integrity, and prepare youth for productive lives. Whereas the Cristalian helps to mentor, educate, and encourage young people to succeed. And whereas the Youth Department of St. James AME Church will present the Second Annual Cristalian on Saturday, August fifth, two thousand seventeen, from two PM to six PM at the All Wars Memorial Building in Atlantic City. And whereas it is the desire of city council of the city of Atlantic City to recognize the dedication and devotion of the organizers and participants of the Cristalian. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Atlantic City hereby designates Saturday, August fifth, two thousand seventeen, as Cristalian Day in Atlantic City and proudly salutes the Youth Department of St. James AME Church for their outstanding efforts. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine being affirmative. And now the president, that brings us to public comments and voting. Uh, Mr. Chinam?
Well, I'm sorry I had to write over the top the young man's name, but I told him that I was gonna do that. You know, I didn't want him to talk to councilmen, cops come in, I won't get nothing then, so. But I just wanted to say to the council members up there that, uh, you know, I've been living a long time and I finally saw some construction going on in Pauline Perry.
That's right.
And I see things are going on down at Tulane, the old high school.
Right.
And two ends of our city we're rebuilding. Gentlemen, I hope and pray that all of you nine men realize how important your city is. And all six of you have a piece of that boardwalk over there, which is one of our most important attractions that we have. I don't care about the CRDA and city, county, and the state dividing our city up. We're one city. And that boardwalk is very important, our beach is very important. And you see how important the beach is down the beach, what they're going to do. This could happen here in Atlantic City as well, just like that. Let us all work together, gentlemen. Get our city back to where it was in its greatness. Please. It's on the ball, it's moving slowly but surely. Now let's get it going. Stop fighting each other, it's true. Go in the back room and fight. I don't want to see you out here fighting. Now, citizens, this is your town too. Let's do your part. For all of you, let's work together to make Atlantic City greater. Stop talking about each other and helping each other. That's what counts. And I want to say what I have to say, go, because I won't have no dinner if I don't get home. Y'all have a blessed night.
Thank you, Mr. Chinam.
Joseph Clorow?
Age before beauty. Come on back. And I have twenty questions for council. Just give, just deliver. Mind your own business, man. Don't interrupt me, I'm talking.
He's supposed to face council.
Yeah, well, everybody else didn't. What are you doing, just putting one role on me and not on everybody else? As I always say, Marty Small may be withdrawing his tort claim against the city, but I'm gonna file one against him for what he did to me at the last council meeting. I want you to know that I ran the recall that led to Mr. Ogden being elected mayor. Okay? I think, uh, I'll get back to the impeachment of Small as council president later. But, uh, the governor gave the city three years to solve its financial situation to come up with a plan. The city as a government did not act, causing the state takeover. The mayor and all council let the state take away our sovereignty. They took away our home rule and our government failed us, and the state acted because the city did not. The state took over the city of Atlantic City, therefore they assumed the debt. They should pay the debt off. They have all the money. The mayor and council let the state take away our collective bargaining, our civil service protection and everything, and they're selling off our assets. So concerning an oath of office, which all these office holders took and even pledged allegiance to the flag to start this meeting. The oath of office is to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of New Jersey. In this case, council or council president makes a rule that only two questions can be asked of my government, which is restricting my freedom of speech, interrupting me, and disrupting the last council meeting. And not a one of you council members or lawyers stood up while council president was violating my civil and constitutional rights. I didn't ask two questions, and I certainly didn't ask a third. So I didn't break no two-question rule. And the council president had me removed by the police. I'm filing a tort claim against him for violating my rights. I was removed by the police for not breaking council rules. We can all see the video, I've seen it thirty-five times. I've been taken out of the meeting thirty-five times on channel ninety-seven. And we can all see that video of the meeting, and we can see by the video of the meeting, you can see from the time I stepped to the microphone and was taken out by police at the door was only sixty seconds. I did not ask a third question. So I therefore did not break their two-question rule. And what this gentleman did to me, I will see him in court, cause I'm gonna file a tort claim. Right? And I want council to impeach him and remove him as council president for abuse of power. Okay? Now, here's twenty questions. I'm only kidding.
Mr. Patel, I'm, I'm sorry, but you go on to three minutes and twenty seconds, so.
Yeah, I know the rules, man, but he don't.
Atlantic City Arts Commission?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to announce the public, uh, represent arts, Tulane Arts Commission. All commissioners here today, stand up, please. We have two art commissioners, thank you. Tulane Arts Commission and collaboration with the Tulane Public Library will present Tulane's native son, Jacob Lawrence, ex, um, continual exhibition for the whole month of September. September the seventh, two to four o'clock, we're gonna have reception at Tulane. two to four o'clock, we're gonna have reception at the Tulane City Public Library. We have ten iconic prints from Lawrence. We have four originals on loan. We have some artifacts from New York Times clippings from Terry Dufus Inc., and they gave us a book also. We also have second award Pennsylvania Public School art students participating in Jacob Lawrence's portrait contest, and their work will be exhibited on the second floor meeting room for an entire month of September. Jacob Lawrence was born September the seventh, nineteen seventeen, fifty twenty-two, Art Avenue. He was the first American artist to paint history. His claim in frame was the Migration of the Negro. It's a sixteen narrative series that depicted African-Americans coming from the rural South to the urban North in seek of economical, uh, opportunities and better education for the facilities. There were small panels, twelve by eighteen inches. Thirty are museum art, permanent collection, and thirty are the Philly's collection in Washington, DC. Five, uh, prints will be donated to the Tulane City Free Public Library on October the second, and five will be in permanent collection of the Sea of Atlantic City on October the second. We invite everyone and everyone to come to the world famous Tulane City's native artist Jacob Lawrence, who was born the third war, as I mentioned, fifteen twenty-two, Art Avenue. Thank you.
I have some color, I can pull up here.
Deidra Edmonds? Evan Sanchez? Tom Lemain?
First of all, I thank you, uh, council for pulling Resolution 480. I hope you did for the same reasons we are here to make sure you did. As a member of the Board of Directors for the Atlantic City Waterfront Foundation, which manages the place known as Gardeners Basin from the City of Atlantic City, we appreciate that. I have board members with us tonight to, uh, to appreciate what you have done. And we also want to make sure that you know that consensually we are in agreement with what has been proposed. But as they say, the message is in the details, and there weren't enough details in that resolution. There are so many things that have to be covered. That's the number one point. Number two, if in fact a private manager can come in and get accomplished what we could not do in some thirty-five years, facing stopgaps like, you name it, green acres, we are green acres property, which really restricts what we can do. Number two, Department of Educate, uh, Department of Public Works, uh, DPP, all the three-letter guys, and in addition to, one more has come down on us lately, and that's the Park Service. So, we've been trying to develop it. And people say, well, hey, you've been doing anything. Well, we've been trying. But as you know, when you get into the three-letter guys and you get into the two green acres, which is the number one, we're really running into a snag. So in that regard, we really thank council for pulling it. Soon as you get together with some details, I know you're having a meeting coming up on September 5th, uh, to give us the details of what will be entailed, when the resolution, if and when it is passed. Since that was a moot point now, all of a sudden, I would like to address, uh, Councilman Tivitt's concern, because this came up in the Boardwalk Committee meeting this morning, which I am the chairman, uh, the drug situation. It has been found that the needle exchange has basically been a needle giveaway. And because of the social unbalance that Atlantic City has, God forbid me for going there, but for the grace of God, though I do not mean to diminish social services. But Atlantic City seems to take more than its share of social services. If the fervor to split the money that was out there, that's out there for the pilot bill, to split the social services that are provided to people who need that, we would be a lot better off. So, it has come down to this. It has been described, Atlantic City has been described as an all-inclusive resort for druggies, for needle exchanges, excuse me, needle giveaways. So Councilman Tivitt, I think if that can be addressed and maybe starts spreading the social services burden that Atlantic City has had for a long time, to the point where counties like Ocean County and Monmouth County were actually bussing their problems to Atlantic City because Atlantic City is, as we said, unfortunately, an all-inclusive resort for, for the drug and those who have social problems. Thank you very much, and once again for, for holding off on 480. Let us know when it's ready for a resolution.
Brenda?
Um, I'm Jared.
Good, good afternoon, everyone. Happy to see all of you here.
I'm.
Happy to see all of the councilmen at work. I have been a member of the Atlantic City Waterfront, Waterfront Foundation for forty years. And Tom Lemain just basically gave you a cursor view of what we are now facing. However, we do not, we are not against the redevelopment. It's just that the way that we have been left out of everything has made such a difference. And we think that the board, who has worked very hard for at least forty years to keep all of the pricing very low for everyone's benefit in this city, needs to have a voice. So, thank you for coming and thank you for listening. Derek Pison?
Good evening, City Council Administration and residents of Atlantic City. Uh, first, uh, Councilman Kurtz, uh, in regards to the technology report, I just want to say that TriX57 does have the city council meetings online, and you can go online to trix57.com and pull them up, watch them whenever you want. Usually they're up a day after the meeting. Now, I have a complaint. Most folks that know me know by no means am I approved. I think that most folks that know me would not have any argument that I have a great deal of experience in music and entertainment. Over the last week and a half, I attended a concert with Alicia Atulja at, uh, Wiggins Waterfront Park on last Monday. On last Friday, I was with legendary Blue Notes in Linyawo. On Sa- Saturday, I did sound for an excellent Kentucky Avenue Renaissance Festival put on by Steve Young. And, uh, great performance by Angela Burton and her band Passion, along with the legendary Stylistics. And Monday night, the concert was canceled because of the rain. But last night, I was at Brigantine with, uh, Maxi Priest, which was another great concert. Last Thursday, I was at the Rough Riders concert. And therein lies the problem. You have Eddie Morgan come in here and talk about how he works with the youth and what he does. And I've seen what he does. I've played with Eddie and worked with the students. Uh, I spent the last year as a music teacher at one of our local schools. And, you know, I spent a lot of time trying to get the kids to listen to music without a lot of negative influences in it. I know Eddie does. Angela has youth come up and perform with her band on many occasions. And, um, they always give very nice performances. I have to commend Steve Young, because he has some rappers that performed on Saturday at the Kentucky Avenue Renaissance Festival. And, uh, even though you could tell they could have gone off in one direction, they kept it very clean. I think it's commendable that Live Nation, um, donated thirty thousand dollars to the Boys and Girls Club. Absolutely fantastic. I think it's commendable that they went over to the Boys and Girls Club and interacted with the children and, you know, different things. Uh, it's wonderful that the one company provided sneakers for all the kids.
Pison?
But to parade those kids up during that concert, where there was so much cursing?
Pison.
Use of the N-word. Yes, is my tone up?
Yes.
Use of the N-word. It was a travesty. It, we should not have had those children from the Boys and Girls Club at that concert.
Call the police.
I'm, I'm not trying to pull a rule, though.
No.
I, I wanted to get my point across.
I mean, we get the point. We get it.
Okay.
Bob Frankevich, Director, AC, Free Public Library.
Good evening, everyone. Bob Frankevich, Atlantic City Free Public Library. Uh, I'd like to just start out by plugging the Third Thursday Music Series, which is continuing. Uh, next Thursday night at five o'clock at the library, we will have Leonard Dozier, who is born in Pleasantville, New Jersey, attended and graduated Tulane City High School. He is an accomplished actor who appears in theater in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Philadelphia, New England. He's also a voice of NFL films, and he is also an accomplished musician. Therefore, he's, uh, appearing at the Atlantic City Library next Thursday at four o'clock. It's a really nice little venue. It, it seats only eighty people, and it's very intimate. You get to talk to the artists during the performances. It's a fun hour, and it's free. Uh, also, I would like to thank the Atlantic City Arts Commission for coming to me back in December last year and asking us if we would host the Jacob Lawrence exhibit. I was absolutely thrilled to have that opportunity. And we invite everyone, please, in September, to come by the library, look at this wonderful art, learn about this gentleman. He was an educator. He was very significant in the art, art world. And the art, as, as the Arts Commission said, uh, they're going to give us four of the prints, which will be in the library permanently with a biography about Jacob Lawrence. So thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Ed Morgan? Paul Harold?
Uh, council, I guess I'm not really prepared to speak, but, um, regarding the Gardeners Basin, little thing there. I'm, uh, I have Atlantic City sweets and treats. Me and my wife, this year is our second year. Um, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about being taken over and having my rents increase and basically kind of pushing me out. That's my concern. We love Gardeners Basin. We've been down in that neighborhood for eighteen years. I love it there. I think they've done a good job with what they had to work with, so I hope not to get pushed out in a big move. Thank you.
Really quick, um, are we hearing that the foundation hasn't had, um, dialogue with, uh, the developer and the likes? Cause I heard two people come up and speak that.
That is true. We do not know the details of the proposal that was, oh, about a few moments ago, you presented here, council. Uh, there are bullet points, councilmen, if you want me to, uh, there's a lease and land agreement. Assets have not been determined where they will go. Uh, the future of the association, which has been running the, uh, Gardeners Basin for the city for forty-some years. Bulk and repairs. There's no financial penalties. There's a lot of details. I mean, we just can't say, okay, let, let a private enterprise take over. We have to know the details of that, because we currently hold the lease of Gardeners Basin. And we've been holding Gardeners Basin for the city for a long time, allowing, uh, enterprises like Paul just mentioned to thrive in Gardeners Basin and to make it a place where people would seek as a destination. So, all of a su- now, again, we, we suppose this by saying, we want something done. If private developers can do more than we were able to do and are able to skirt all the government agencies, including the number one, since we are a green acres property, we are very limited. But if they can do it, fine. However, to start the first process, we have to know the details, Councilman Gilliam, and we don't know the details. Uh, we have been in brief conversations with the proposed managers of Gardeners Basin, but that's it. There have not been details. A lot of, a lot of Ts have to be crossed, a lot of Is have to be dotted before this can go any further. Does that answer your question, sir?
Council President, I didn't want to get into this, why I pulled it to, uh, my colleague in this Lemain. First of all, we had RFP, we meaning the city, for a, uh, developer. And we meaning the city picked a developer. And we meaning the city had them come to our city committee and we reported out and we approved the developer. Now, the lawyer for the developer indicates that he has met with you. He's not here today. That's why I didn't want to get into the back and forth with who what has been said and what hasn't been said. But I can say that there has been extensive back and forth with the state and Green Acres and DPP and the Park Authority, and we're at the point, I thought, that we can move forward. But my colleagues have raised substantial questions. That's why I said, and we're going to get the answers and we're going to move forward. But to say that, um, the process has been without input is not really accurate. Now, if you say that it hasn't been to your liking, I can accept that. Or if you say, if you say that you haven't got enough input, I'll accept that. But to say that there has, this just blocks them up. August ninth is not really accurate. Our committee members and the records will reflect, we have been talking about this for months. Now, are the questions need to be answered? Yes, that's why I pulled it. And, and we will answer the questions. This is an open, transparent process. We had a RFP process, and the records will show, public records, you can see that it goes back at least six months before the RFP went out. So, we will answer the questions, but I want people to understand, since, since you opened it up. Firstly, the reason that the city went out for a private developer is because we figured a private developer had the wherewithal and the expertise to do what the volunteers couldn't do. And let me say this about the volunteers. The volunteers have done an excellent job, without doubt. But the other thing that should be mentioned, and I didn't want to bring it out, but I will, is because of public records. The Scarborough Development Company that won the award have been working there. They've been up there for a couple of years as the operator, so they're not people just dropped out of the sky. So I'm saying, we don't want to get into the whole process because they're not here and we have to have them here.
That, 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 that part is not true. Uh, we, we, we understand that, that we employ them.
Right.
The, uh,
That's what I said.
The, the enterprise under the Scarborough name is the only one who has responded to the RFP. And don't get us-
That's not accurate.
Don't get us wrong. Now, we-
The RFP was responded by more than we selected them. It was a process.
The bottom line is, and you said they've been in contact with Green Acres, and they've been in contact with the Park Service. If they have gotten further than we were ever able to get in all the years we have been trying to achieve what you just said and what Scarborough would like to achieve, if they've been able to get any headway on that, we'd like to know about it. Because we'd like to know how you did that.
They have.
How'd you skirt around it?
They didn't skirt around it.
Well, that's why-
They've been negotiating.
Oh, well-
And they've been talking. Now, that's what I said in my remarks. If you say that you didn't have enough input, I'll accept that. But if, if you indicate that there hasn't been a process, that's just not accurate.
Oh, no, I never meant, I never meant that.
Okay.
The only thing is, there are too many unanswered questions.
I said that, Tom. You said, you said the same thing I said. That's why I pulled it.
Preach it in part.
When I started my report-
I agree.
I said 480, I said my colleagues have raised substantial questions.
Right.
And in order to answer that question, we're going to pull the resolution and get the answer.
And we applaud you for doing that, council. Thank you.
And, and we'll be open, and we'll, we will answer every question that's raised. We'll be answering.
Is that September 5th meeting open?
September 6th.
Six?
That's the council meeting.
Is it open?
All councils are open.
Oh, it's just a regular council meeting? Again, okay, thank you.
But we're going to answer questions from our colleagues between now, August 9th, and September 6th. And it will be a public presentation of everything.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Shabazz, you know, the water company, Vaynerfield, and Gardeners Basin are our only three crown jewels that we have. And when we dealt with the water company, the entire community was involved. Vaynerfield, there was hearings and everything else. And I strongly suggest that we get the people involved before we enter into any agreement with anybody with Gardeners Basin as well, to hear from organizations like this, the people up there. And, you know, my biggest concern is turning something over to somebody for twenty-four years when Kushner owns the property right next door. Something could happen as soon as we have a new governor come in. I think we're moving fast. I think we need to be careful. And I want to see, make sure we have escape clauses and reverts if they don't do what they say. And just like Vaynerfield, when we put that contract together with Vaynerfield, and we approved it at one point, whatever happened, I don't know. But in there was reverter clauses and escape clauses, where if a major developer came, we were able to throw them out, we were able to remove them and not have to buy them out. Like, if you remember, Vaynerfield, the baseball team tried to get a twenty-year lease just so we would have to buy them out for millions of dollars if a major developer come in. And they're my two biggest concerns, that...
Counselman...
As well as getting the people involved because it is one of our three crown jewels, the only thing that we have left in this city to call our own right now.
Counselman, I agree with you. And when I'm having sit here doing this, writing a resolution to all council, saying, "Resolution four, A.D., redevelopment agreement and lease management." I'm asking all council to give me their comments and suggestions by August twentieth. I'm happy the city clerk sent it out. And everybody will give it to me, will have a process that will answer the questions.
What I think is missing is that although we may work our kinks out, they haven't been able to work their kinks out.
They only, we represent them.
They only have a boss.
We need to know. They, the people, all those people out there own that. We represent them.
We're not talking about the foundation. We're talking about anytime you do a redevelopment designation for any neighborhood, it has to allow the community in that neighborhood to come out and access it at the same time. That's the opportunity for the community to learn what the redevelopment of that area is going to be.
Yeah, but we've already worked through that process.
I don't blame you.
When we approved it, yes, we did. But that's, I get you. And we'll do that. We will make sure that the city groups, the councilmen from the first district, the ten, we'll make sure that the groups in that area are heard. We'll make sure that the waterfront is heard. I'll reach out to the lawyer. That's his job for his client. And everybody will be heard. It's all a process.
We'd like you to be aware of the pitfalls that y'all are going to get into because we've been into them for a long time. And I don't think the resolution has recognized. This is not easy to do. We've been fighting it for a long time. And God bless them. If a private enterprise, Councilman Shabazz, can do more than we did, God bless them. Let them go right ahead and do that. However, we would like to assist in that process by letting everyone know the pitfalls that we have come up against because of all the regulations that we are subject to. That's all.
Thank you, John.
And we have a fiscal responsibility because we are still under the agreement with the city, that we are still fiscally responsible as members of the board. And, you know...
How long is your lease book that you have currently?
It runs till...
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
Is there escape clauses for that?
Every five years.
Or do you have to agree to give up on it?
It's a mutual thing, councilman.
But you have to agree.
Every five years.
Right. But, you know, we don't want it to be the adversary.
No, no, no. I'm just trying to understand the point. We gave you an escape clause when we put you in there.
We would like to make this transition as smooth as possible. But it can't be...
We should...
All right. Yes. Can we all remember?
That there was a business minister that tried to do... Where is this? Why is twenty twenty-six?
Yeah.
You understand that?
Yeah.
And James Cooper represented Gardeners Basin and saved us.
I think that was a great thing.
I certainly do. I think it was a great thing because at that point, the administration that was in there tried to wipe it right out.
And they got to negotiate. That's all.
All right. All right, move forward.
Colleen Herr?
Thank you. Thank you for having me and listening to me. And I am going to talk about something similar. But I'm talking about it a little bit differently. As my husband said, we are stakeholder in Gardeners Basin as a business owner with A.C. Suites and Treats. Last year, we spent probably twenty-five thousand dollars investing in the little building that used to be Web Feet. For us, it's a huge investment. We asked for no funding. We asked for no grants. We blindly basically invested the money knowing that we would hopefully get a lease, which we did. The lease right now, although it says it's a two-year lease, it's really renewable year to year, which is, which is kind of, for us at least, it's kind of ridiculous considering we've invested that much money in the building to have a lease that goes year to year. So, what I'm asking the council to take into consideration when you are dealing with Gardeners Basin is to think about the tenants that are there, like the larger tenants that are there, like Gilcrest, ourselves, that they house, the Surf Shop, that have larger interest in Gardeners Basin. We've all invested a lot of money in the buildings. I would hate to think that, number one, next year when I go to renew our lease, that it's not going to be renewed because there's different plans for Gardeners Basin and which could happen, I guess, and we'll be out on our gear. But my concern is, number one, the cost of the lease, that the increase is not going to be ridiculous. And we're little fish in a big pond. I'm hoping Gardeners Basin isn't going to change. We all do know that it is a diamond in the rough. There are improvements that can be made. And hopefully, we will make sure that the public in South Jersey sees how beautiful it is and other improvements are made. But our concern is also about our lease specifically and what the increase commit. You know, I mean, hopefully, it'll be reasonable as improvements are made if that would need to be done. Also, I'm hoping the lease term will, like for the larger businesses such as ourselves, that we could have an option for a five-year lease. You know, just, I just think it's crazy that anybody would invest that much money thinking it's just going to be every twelve months. Well, maybe you're here, maybe you're not. I just, I don't know. That's just what I'm looking for. And also, possibly, the people that are the major stakeholders there, I don't know if there's a possibility that they could be grandfathered in as a business there, once Scarborough or whoever it would be would take it over. And hopefully, that they would be given or need to have some type of a performance bond that if they don't work out as the developer, that they could be booted off the project. And my other complaint also is that I'm hoping that they'll dredge the waterfront area because you're going to lose the Marine F nine. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Borkin? Angela Burton?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, gentlemen. I stand up here this evening, and I want you all to know we are all live. So, everyone knows Angela Burton knows live on Facebook. So, everything that we're doing and saying, it is live. Gentlemen, you're doing an outstanding job to Angela. That's the way I feel. And I'm asking you to do, as a singer that's born and raised here in Atlantic City. Judah, gee, you can come up with me real quick. I would love to ask everyone, you've taken away for artists here in Atlantic City. Everything has been taken away for groups like mine. Judah also has his own group. As local artists, what am I supposed to do? Thank God for Steve Young believing and still following up on Kentucky Avenue Renaissance, which Kentucky Avenue to Angela Burton means a lot because that made my name. It also, the government for thirty-five years working for the troops, made my name. So, I thank God for the Club Hall. If you help us, we can get Melvin Moore back in town at the Renaissance. We can get all those name acts that we had work. I miss Gardeners Basin. I miss y'all. I can't perform there any longer. I miss Gardeners Basin. I miss Farmers Market. There's nowhere for me to perform there. Candy Plaza, I opened up for the Miss America pageant when Sandra Ushy was there. She said, "Angela, you will be outside when people coming in." I don't have that. I'm asking you gentlemen to please look out for your local entertainment. Kaysen, Derek Kaysen, he has a group. Eddie Morgan has a group. We deserve first dibs. If you're going to have a group on the beach, I think that I can say in thirty-five countries, and if you could agree to win a round of applause, that I can open up for one of those groups. Can I give all the bells and bells? Because if I can go around a country and say in thirty-five countries, and I can't open up for a group that comes here, tell me, what's going on, guys? Please, 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 help Steve with the Kentucky Avenue Renaissance. And I'm asking you, as a woman that's getting older and I'm thanking God, my CD's out. Yes, and I want you, listen, I'm looking at all of you. More on your page, y'all. Listen, I'm asking you all to come to the release. I'll be back another day for that. But I am asking you gentlemen, as an artist in Atlantic City, to want to continue to perform and one day walk up here like that lady at a hundred years and say, "I'm still performing." God bless you all.
Steve Young?
Steve Young, and I'm here on behalf of Polaris Development Group, LLC. And we are a development company that's been in existence since 2001. In 2011, we started Kentucky Avenue Renaissance Festival. So, we've been there, doing this for six years. And I just want to give some shout-outs to some of the sponsors because we didn't get no government funding. Nothing. No funding from the city, the state, the county, federal government, all local, small businesses, and grassroots people. And we're proud of that. So, we want to thank Dorsey Concrete Construction, MBCA, Cedar Market, Law Offices Riley and Riley, Cooper Levison P.A., Ben Zepner, Joseph Dockerty, Satch Architects, Corporate Employee Benefits, Hawks Janitorial Service, Attorney James Carter, Attorney Bruce Ward, Atlantic City Death Corp., Jigoli Construction, Hard Rock Casino in Atlantic City, and Showbo Hotel. That's just a few that helped us out. Now, this entertainment was awesome. Press didn't come out. We didn't hear about something positive in this city. And I'm talking about the education and the culture of Kentucky Avenue. So, we want to again thank Aljana Blackwell's Passion. She is CEO. The Stylixics Review, Angela Burton and Passion, Firestorm Band, John Hall, the Boss Man, Raymond Tyler, the DJ, the closer, Derek Kaysen, our engineer, Dan Fugel, the ass pianist, Joe McCheney, R&B vocalist, Jay Blue, a gospel vocalist, Lovely Karen, a poet, Aqua Bootu Band, Antaiwa, Kaeni Raggy from Jamaica, Tashan Ramos from ATL, Lot of Hip-Hop in Atlantic City, Angela Davis, Angela Dee from Atlantic City, One Hundred and Twenty, R&B in Atlantic City, Three Kings from Philadelphia, Lady London, Soul R&B, Tahita Jacobs, all the way from Florida. And special thanks to Jeff, rest in peace. He was very supportive, working for Public Works, assisting us. And Mink Mink, Demetrius Hamlet, as well as Gerald McMillian and the SID cleanup, as well as the billboard. And it's very proud when you see local people on the billboard coming in this city on the expressway. And we want to thank them for that. We want to thank WEHA and all the volunteers. But what we want to say going forward, we want to hope the city break back some things that have been taken away. Kentucky Avenue, Club Hall have been taken away. Gardeners Basin has been taken away. No entertainment. If it wasn't for us being a private company and keeping the culture of Atlantic City alive, then we wouldn't be having nothing at all. So, we're going to stay independent and do it for itself and keeping the culture here in Atlantic City. So, we want to, because it's about education. It's about our culture, and it's about entertainment. And we want to work with everybody to continue that struggle. But it's a fight to keep something here locally for people when it comes to entertainment. And it shouldn't be like that. When we see all the millions and millions of dollars going up on the beach and nothing coming in our city, we have to do it ourselves. So, again, I want to thank you, council. And we have heard a lot of resolutions today, but I didn't hear nothing about Polaris Development putting on a dramatic show for the tourism district as well as representing Atlantic City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Friends in Action?
Hello, council. Our mayor, the administrative staff, all the audience. April twenty-ninth of 2015, Councilman Delgado convened an ad hoc committee of the Atlantic City Multicultural Programs Committee. With that, a lot of people in Atlantic City all joined in along with Friends in Action, Police Foundation, Marumba Society Page. And we had our first multicultural festival. Well, moving two years to the future now, we would not be having festivals, but we will be having a Unity Day. September seventeenth, and everybody's up at Gardeners Basin. Ironically so, that is where we're looking at having Unity Day for Atlantic City, here in Atlantic City, where our city, all of our residents, young and old, will have a day to come out and enjoy a day of peace, harmony, and unity in our community. That has been our slogan, what we've always been doing, uniting our city, our children, and our seniors with every event we do. Now, it's not going to be easy, as it never is because short window of time. But thankfully, you know, moving forward, you know, with Councilman Delgado, our city, Councilman Gilliam, Tibbet, Councilman Marsh, Smalls, they're all supporters. And we thank y'all. And so, to make this day even greater, give you some idea of what we're going to have. For children, all kind of fun activities, from tuck-able wars, three-legged races, frisbee, dodgeball, you name it for the children. Old school fun, we're going to bring that back.
Dump tank.
Oh, and a dump tank. So, if I want to get a dump tank, feel free to get up in there. And that was donated by somebody for us. Local bands. We like to show in Atlantic City the talent that exists here, both unlike their cultural because it is one thing that we want to do is show the culture of Atlantic City. We have over fifty in our city. So, for the Bangin' Death Community, the Vietnamese communities, we want them to come on a stage and show with a performance of song, dance, or spoken word, the cultures that you have. We're also going to have DJ showcase. So, if our local DJs come out that way and showcase some of their talent so that they can be seen, or maybe some of the casino people. Then I'm like, hey, we are going to have a little treat. I thought of barbecue sauce showcase showdown, where for those who got their own barbecue sauce, you come out that way and display their own sauce and maybe be picked by somebody else. Lastly, we also going to be doing back to school for the children. As we've done in years past, we're looking at doing supplies for children. It will happen, of course, after they're going to school so we'll even get a clearer understanding of what kids really do mean. Last year, we did three thousand books at the giveaway. We're doing that again this year. So, thank you for listening to me, council, and we'll see you September seventeenth at Unity Day Event.
Thank you.
Counsel President, I'd like to expand on that. The premise of the Unity Day Event, like my partner, my brother said, is to promote unity in the city. We've had so many situations where we've been pulled apart. We've been polarized. We've helped to polarize one another, polarize our city to a separate point. Whether it has to do with political endeavors or it has to do with economic endeavors or it's just this mass monster of business, the way it seems to like to do business here in Atlantic City. So, this is set up to benefit the residents of Atlantic City and those who call on Atlantic City home because we've had lots of people who have traversed and found homes somewhere else, but they still got sand in their shoes. So, they come here and they come support, do all the events that we possibly have. So, because this is a grassroots event set up for the community, we're hoping to get the same... So because this is a grassroots event set up for the community, we're hoping to get the same type of support, uh, whether it's from our entertainers, we've got wonderful entertainers, Derek Kaysen definitely has a wonderful group. We have, uh, so many, we have our youth involvement. You know, of course, Steve had mentioned before of Polaris Group, and we applaud him, uh, for the stuff that he has. And we have, uh, Ms. Burton, Angela Burton, which is a stellar art, artist in this area. So we hope to highlight our local bands and possibly get some interest from some other people. We've had some people that we know have discussed with friends that are in the know and, and powers that be, uh, to see if we can get some national celebrities to come down to help, uh, help us enjoy our Unity Day. But ultimately, what it's set up is to unite, um, you with your neighbor, us together. So we're gonna have social service agencies, uh, to give information to the general public. We're gonna have, uh, the food bank distributing to some, hopefully if everything works out, the food bank will be there distributing to families in need. Uh, we have, uh, resources that'll be available for people who may need clothing, um, or shoes, uh, for the community. Because sometimes we, we, um, we're not as humble at times, uh, when we need. So if we give them opportunity to take it along the way, maybe they can get it. So it's just about bringing some love and some unity back. Of course, Judah, in the background, we're hoping to see her and her amazing band, uh, perform there. So i- if it's for the city, it's for us. And we're trying to promote it on for the city like we did last time. Last time it was a team of six or seven, and we bust our tail for that event, and there was so much success on it, and there was so much love. We're hoping to perpetuate that type of fever, that love, and make it happen up in Garden Basin to continue bringing back what needs to be back in Atlantic City, back in Garden Basin, and back for our residents. So if you're here, come on down to seventeenth. We're all, you're all welcome to be a part of it, in one aspect or another. First meet, first meeting is Friday. Here at City Council Chambers, um, at three PM. If you're interested and if you're available, please. And if you're not available, you can give us a call at area code six oh nine four six four zero seven three six, that's my cellphone, everyone in the world has it. Anthony, you wanna share your, your phone number?
No.
So if you have my phone number, if not, you can email me here, MDelgado, at the City of Atlantic City, uh, for any questions or involvement, uh, again, three PM, uh, Friday, uh, this Friday, the eleventh. Um, if you're interested, come on down, uh, please, if, if you can, come on, participate. It's all love, my love. Yes, sir.
No, you wanna, I have a water slide that's, uh, forty-foot high, sixty-foot long.
Done deal, I'm bringing the water park.
You don't need a copying machine to copy everyone's ID here.
Exactly, no, no, we're not copying, we're not copying any IDs.
Are you sure?
All right, let's go forward, please.
Get your copying machine too, if you want.
No requirements.
Order nineteen is ordered to provide for historical marker to be erected at the corner of Michigan Avenue and Atlantic Avenue in recognition of Russell Patterson.
Motion, move by Gilliam.
Second.
Second by Randolph. May I have, uh, any questions from, I mean, any comments from the public? Stand by public portion closed, discussion. Make it up, council, call vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Absolutely.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Who's that?
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor, that's nine, is he affirmative? We do have a certificate presenting Miss Patterson.
This is a hometown hero.
Oh, this is so unexpected. Congratulations. Would you like to say? Please sit down. I know you're all tired. I'm truly taken back by this. Um, obviously, this is not the same person from a year and a half ago standing before you. I'm a perfect example of what stress will do to you. It'll kill you. The worst day of my life was being laid off by the city. It's a job that I loved. I love this city, this city's gonna come back again, and she's gonna be stronger than ever. And all the volunteer hours that I put in for this city, which I've had time to think about, since nineteen seventy-four until nineteen, uh, twenty fourteen, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You don't volunteer just to volunteer. You volunteer because it's a gift that you give to yourself. It's a joy. It's the right thing to do. And I've loved every second of doing whatever I could for this city. And I hope that soon somebody will come to replace the hours that I put in and gave to you. I love you all, I love the residents. It's gonna be great again, I thank you so much.
Council President, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't remind folks that she was honored as one of our first hometown heroes acknowledged by state legislatures, uh, state legislators, county legislators, our city itself had, had, uh, given acknowledgement. And i- it's, it's a small thing in comparison to what she deserves. Russell Patterson is an amazing individual. And if you didn't know her story, please find out. She is demonstrative of the word volunteer. Demonstrative of a person who loves to serve her community. And I, it's, I'm honored to be in her presence as always. And I love her so much for everything she's always done. And this is the smallest thing, token that we have in appreciation. And, and I'll offer my prayers endlessly to you, and thank you so much for everything you've done, Russell.
Order twenty is a refunding bond ordinance authorizing the issuance cannot exceed eighty million aggregate principal amount of taxable refunding bonds.
Motion? Move by Chabaz? Second by Randolph. Questions from the public? Stand by public portion closed, discussion? Stand by, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Nine, is he affirmative? Yeah, order number twenty-one. And this is the ordinance amending chapter two forty-three dash eighty-three of the city code to authorize on-street parking meters.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Move by Chabaz, second by Randolph. Any, any questions from the public? Stand by public portion is closed, discussion? Stand by, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
No.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
No.
Small?
Yes.
Seven, is he affirmative?
May I have a motion, group, uh, ordinance is on first reading, regular resolution, new business?
Move it.
Second by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Delgado? You passed me. Chabaz?
All right.
Randolph? Marsh? Kurtz?
Madam clerk, under planning and development, I'd like to co-sponsor four one two, four six five, four seven two, and four seven three. Under revenue and finance, I'd like to co-sponsor four three five, four three nine, four six one. And under public safety, public works, I'd like to co-sponsor four two six. And that is all.
So in other words, co-sponsor the agenda.
I was gonna stop.
I wanna co-sponsor number eleven B. It's okay, it's fine.
Oh, we continue, can you, uh, can you change my vote to twenty-one to negative nine five?
Um, I had asked to sponsor that, co-sponsor eleven B, and then, uh, said why the, oh, council.
Yes. I, I support that.
Chang? Tipp?
Yeah, oh, eleven D, four seventy-four.
Is this a co-sponsor?
No.
Why would you?
Oh, okay, um, please. I wanna pull them off on planning and development, uh, four seventy-four. Uh, new business, eleven D. And new business, four eighty-three.
Was that eleven D that got pulled? And if so, could you, it's not on my agenda?
Not pulled in for discussion.
I, I, I don't, I don't have it on my agenda, council, what's eleven D?
The tow truck, she'll read it to you as it comes up. It's about the tow truck, uh, regulation.
Um, ordinance eleven C, no. Um, under planning and development, conversation, four seventy-one. Um, four seven nine. Four six, four sixty-eight, no. Four fifty-two for discussion. Four fifty-two is under public safety and public works. That's it.
Okay, changing the vote on ordinance twenty-one, Councilman Delgado would like to vote no. Which makes the count six in the affirmative, eight in the negative.
No for eleven C? Three, four sixty-eight, a no for eleven C. Under health and human services.
Will anyone, the ordinance like to provide some entertainment all week?
Anthony, can you give his phone number now?
We're voting on first reading ordinance.
Lot of horn honks.
Eleven A, designating state avenue beach patrol station as Joseph Sykes Memorial Beach Patrol Station. Eleven B, to provide for historical marker to be erected at North Carolina Atlantic Avenue in memory of James L. Cooper Esquire. Eleven C, ordinance amending chapter two oh two, parking residential areas, section two zero two dash two for victims. New business ordinance, uh, eleven, eleven D is supported discussion. Uh, we're voting on resolution, four twelve, four sixty-five, four seventy-two, four seventy-three, four twenty-two, four twenty-three, four twenty-five, four twenty-eight, four thirty-one, four thirty-two, four thirty-five, four thirty-six, four thirty-seven, four thirty-eight, four thirty-nine, four fifty-five, four fifty-six, four fifty-seven, four fifty-eight, four sixty-one, four seventy-five, four seventy-eight, four fourteen, four seventeen, four eighteen, four twenty-one, four thirty-four, four sixty-eight, four twenty-six, four twenty-seven, four thirty, four fifty-three, four fifty-four, four seventy, four eighty-two, four eighty, and four eighty-three was pulled for the session. And new business?
Forty-two is the fourth, for the board.
Yeah, the fourth, and four seventy. Okay, the exceptions noted are no votes. Councilman Gilliam, eleven C. Councilman Tibbet, four sixty-eight is a no vote. Councilman Delgado, no vote for ordinance eleven C and four sixty-eight. Councilman Marsh, co-sponsoring ordinance eleven D. Co-sponsoring Councilman Kurtz, resolution four twelve, four sixty-five, four seventy-two, four seventy-three, four thirty-five, four thirty-nine, four sixty-one, and four twenty-six. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine, is he affirmative with the, with the changes noted? Who first finally? Eleven D. Ordinance first reading, eleven D. Misses and ordinance, to amend Article One, Chapter two fifty-three of the Code of Atlantic City regulating towing of motor vehicles.
Move it, may I have a motion?
Second.
Move by Chabaz, second by Randolph. Discussion?
This was called by Councilman Tibbet.
Um, I agree with everything that's on this ordinance, but I, I think we should add some more, one being, the tow trucks should have the name of their company, uh, should be in order, by ordinance, that the tow trucks should have the name of their company, clearly with the phone number on the trucks. As well as, um, I don't know if any of you have seen a couple of these, predatory tow trucks that are out there right now, that look like they're a hundred years old. I think we should be, uh, inspecting these trucks, and maybe have a seal warranty, just like the taxi cabs have, to prove that they have, uh, if they're subcontractors to these towing companies, to prove that they have, uh, proof of insurance, or the proper insurance. Um, on these, uh, I don't know if you guys have seen a couple of these two new tow trucks in town, they're, really raggedy and beat up, and it doesn't say who they're actually towing for.
That's an amendment, council.
Um, it's a suggestion of Councilman Kurtz, to his ordinance, um.
Yeah, he's, um, I, I like, um, I like the idea of Councilman Tibbet. Might just question, I guess, my point of order, Mr. Tarver, is, um, is this section the appropriate part of the code to put that stimulation?
Probably not this section, because this section was just to handle, it was an amplification of this, the state statutes, Community Affairs, to basically handle private, property tow, uh, counterfeited activity if you'd like. I can certainly have something to prepare people for that.
Well, Mr. Kurtz can handle it from here, I'll only take it through your committee and you guys get it drawn up maybe for the next meeting. Because it is something that I've noticed, that there's a couple tow trucks out there that are, really predatory, predatory tow trucks right now.
Well, as I mentioned, I definitely like the idea, and I guess I'll, I'll join you in, uh, asking the committee, Mr. Tarver, if you could help guide us, you know, help us prepare some type of draft or review at the next committee meeting.
And Mr. Finch, you'll, uh...
Mr. Tibbet, we'll invite you to the committee to represent the idea, just to make sure that when we get something in writing that reflects, you know, your sentiments and we're representing you properly.
That's all I have, Councilman President.
And Randolph is a co-sponsor?
Could I be adding too?
No. Too, too many mentions of the third ward. It is that, he said too many cars being towed out the third ward amongst others. Sorry, third ward, it's a, but, um, all right, we can call a vote.
Okay, so we're adding, uh, sponsors, Councilman Randall and Chabaz. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
No.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivid?
Yes.
And Small.
Yes.
Eight in affirmative, one in the negative.
Council President, sorry, there's one other point, uh, Councilman, that you made that was good, maybe direct to Finch, if you could also look into that medallion concept, so we could address that at the same time. I think that's a good idea as well. Thank you.
Next.
And we have resolution four seventy one, which was pulled by Councilman Gilliam. This is a one-year extension contract with Arterial LLC. Change order number one, and it's no cost to the city.
Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Move by Chabaz, second by Randall. Discussion.
Right, um, does, does it mean change order for extension? Does change order normally means that there's some kind of financial involved with it?
There's no finance, fantasy if you want to explain something.
I'm just saying, if, if, the terminology may be wrong.
Oh, I, I...
He says change order, but the dollar now is zero. We don't, we don't tolerate change orders on this agenda.
It's extension, Councilman Gilliam, it's correct, extension. It's no, it's no money, it's not a, it's not a change order as you understand, you're right.
Right.
Change order normally talk about money. Right.
So just change it to extension.
That's amended.
That's amended.
To, motion to amend it.
Motion to amend it. Second.
Move by Kurtz, second by Randall.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Only amendment.
Amendment.
Amendment, yes.
Who do you want?
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivid?
Yes.
And Small.
Yes.
So that's nine in the favor for the amendment to read an mandatory agreement versus change order number one.
That's right.
Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Chabaz, second by Randall. Discussion. Change, uncallable.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivid?
Yes.
And Small.
Yes.
We have resolution number four seventy four. And this was pulled by Councilman Tivid.
Move it. Second.
Do you have a motion?
I think it's good, Council.
Move by Gilliam.
I'll say it.
Second by Chabaz. Any discussion?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm looking at the North Carolina Avenue pieces and the twenty-three, uh, Arctic Avenue, which is the old Columbus Post in, in here. And those properties are worth over two million dollars according to our assessments. Are we having minimum bids on those so that we don't take a beating on these because they're very valuable properties? The North Carolina Avenue pieces are already far collapsed, paved, lined, and lights on it.
You don't knock them down, no.
Biggie's. This is South. This is South. Piggies is already sold.
Eleven South.
Eleven South, twenty-five South, these were pieces we got from resource, we got from Gino's. And we used to have a deal with the, with the county now. I know Piggies, the guy that bought Piggies stole that contract from us with the county. Well, here's a chance to steal that county back, steal that lease back, and rent these properties out to the county. And, and make five, six hundred thousand dollars a year for the city by keeping those.
So Councilman, do you question?
Just something I would check in with Danny Levinson?
I'm sorry.
That's something you might want to check the county, uh, the county exec Levinson about possibly renting them out and in. Um, but my question is, is, do we have minimum bids on these properties? Because I know they're well sorted after the Columbus Post, which is right next to the Walk. And, you know, I don't want to see these properties go for pennies on the dollar. The city's slowly coming up, we don't have to sell everything on the low.
Well, I don't think we are. I can't speak to the, at the actual, um, operations, but I would imagine that it would be done like this, like we, uh, normally do. A land sale for the purpose of land sale, obviously, to generate income. But I guess if you want to...
Be smart though, when you generate income, you can't grab a little nail and you can earn a lot later.
But I, I, I guess, not I guess, the, uh, solicitor can speak to the mechanics of the contract.
Um, but then, while, while Ben is coming up, um, I, I, I've never really been a, a opponent of, um, selling. Land that's, uh, um, that's assembled. And when you, when you have the ability to, uh, to start putting development in. Because you'll get people buying or coming in purchasing things. Right in the middle of these things and causing development, not to actually spawn. Because someone hope, is holding up a piece of a property, um, and, um... And my next question is, out of all of these, let's say they all were sold for the original price on the sheet, how much would that be that the city would bring in?
I think I included a total. Um, but on the right, on the right column is just the assessed value, doesn't necessarily mean what we're going to give us out for.
With the tax rate on that.
Well, that's correct. Um, is, was your question about minimum bids?
You know, my question was, if we were to sell all of these for auction.
For that?
For the value which they assess for, how much would it be?
I don't know.
Um, i- is there a reason that we're moving to auction our property? When we're seeing that, uh, development's starting to spawn and the interest in Atlantic City, um, is beginning to change. Um, are we looking at potentially, uh, again, doing redevelopment designations? For, um, parcels that are already assembled? Because you're looking at, um, Atlantic Avenue, looking at North Carolina Avenue. Because we, we went out to auction. Hobart, Indiana, um, there's a housing crisis in the city. Um, no one's going to come and want to live in the city when the average house is fifty-plus years old, right? And if you want to try to actually begin to have people have interest in coming to live in the city and also create adequate housing for some of the people that are already in the city. Um, there's been talks of doing things with Stanley Homes and things of that nature. Why aren't we looking at these parcels in a way to put enough for housing? For those people, knowing that that's a possibility and having, um, a housing market in stock for someone to want to come in? Because think about it, if I wanted to come in as an outsider and buy a home in Atlantic City and did not want a fixer out there, there's not. So we should be looking at ways of creating, um, designations to put houses for folks that want to live in the city. I just don't understand why we're continuously auctioning, because if you look at any private development from a housing standpoint, there aren't any. We go out and we, we sell these parcels and the people sit on them, we don't force them to put green, um, vegetation on them, just allow them to sit there empty, dirty, and decrepit. So dollars make sense, we understand that, but we also, when we're selling things, we want to make sure folks are developing and not just holding parcels. And, and having the city look the same way it's been looking for the last thirty years.
So, the, the property list that you guys have in front of you, um, the auction's not scheduled until October. So if there's issues with specific properties that maybe you think are worth more and there should be minimum bids for it. Or you think shouldn't be on the list, we can certainly have that discussion. And they can be pulled from the list and that resolution can go on the next council agenda, we have enough time.
So you're saying us voting on this does not chip in that auction?
So, no, inevitably, if the, let's say these properties, all these properties were auctioned and purchased at auction. Those bids have to come back to you for approval before that sale is actually filed.
I'm asking a specific question. If we move on this tonight, does that spearhead that auction and can we not, um, pull one of these off before the auction?
They, you can technically change the list prior to the auction. So you could do it by resolution in the next council meeting.
So we're not having auction before October?
No.
So, Mr. Chabaz, you're looking at the North Carolina Avenue properties through planning committee? That's the guy, you take a look at the lot yourself when you're driving around and, uh, you'll keep walking around.
I didn't, I don't have a sale, I mean, right?
But, but, and, and look at those lots I was talking about, they're already parked, lots lit up, very valuable. I think we should have minimal bids on them so nobody comes in and steals them for pennies over dollars from us.
Councilman Tivid, we're on the same page, the, the idea of the surplus, uh, sale is to generate income. And as, as the council president said, we're, I, I...
Smart income though.
We're all concerned about pushing the tax rate down, we're all concerned about the taxpayers. So that's the genesis of this, trying to, uh, increase revenue, trying to push the tax rate down, and also look at, as Councilman Gilliam said, for future development. But if you see a lot of these, uh, lots here are not, uh, really future development sites. It's something that rather just sit idle and not be on the tax roll, which might come on tax roll, that's what we...
Can you tell me where this list come from? Did you generate this or?
This is from our planning and development, from, from our, uh, from our record that we have.
Did you do it or you involved in it or?
Our community.
You're just supporting it like everybody else, yeah.
I'm supporting because it makes sense, as, I'm, I have my taxpayer hat on. As a taxpayer, if, are we doing all we can to maximize, uh, dollars? I think yes, that's why I'm supporting.
I'm just, see, I'm just gun shy, you have to get the hosed on Piggies lot, you know, get the hosed on that lot. I don't want to see, I don't want to see us get hosed again. You can raise money, but you gotta raise pork money, we're still the keepers of the people's money. Can't eat it by that lot.
All right, smooth agenda.
No, no, at least, at least our basis.
Smooth agenda.
Chang?
I'm sorry, move.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
We consider that, and made a million a year, like their contract is.
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivid?
Yes.
And Small.
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. We have, uh, resolution four seventy nine, pulled by Councilman Gilliam, this is authorizing NJPVP, CREDA, and other development applications.
Move it.
Move, move by Chabaz, second, second by Gilliam.
Four seventy, what, what does that mean? What is, what do you, I'm sorry.
Four seventy nine.
That's, uh, our, our resolution authorizing us?
Yeah. But what does that mean?
For, uh, has this applied for, well, maybe see, he can explain it.
No, I can, I can explain that one.
Okay.
Um, Council, Councilman, that one, um, resolution deals with the skywalk that they want to install. There's certain things and approvals that they have to get in order to make that project report. They need approval from, uh, CRDA, they need approvals from, uh, DPP, and other, um, things they have to go through. And what, what, what they're asking for is approval for the city to sign off on those applications that they make. Otherwise, no one can sign off from the city.
And Councilman, in my report, I did indicate that, uh, we had Tropicana in our committee. And they made a presentation and we approved of it, and the presentation was basically them doing a skywalk from the Chelsea Hotel to Tropicana. And they have to, as the solicitor said, make applications.
That's, that's, that's a generic understanding, I just need to know the legal ramifications.
Yes, sir.
Into what that meant. Because when I see CRDA partnering with the city, I would love to see them in unison doing some good stuff for us. So I was hoping that they was giving us some, uh, decent money or something.
Well, hopefully that'll happen in the future.
You're being on point.
But, but I just wanted to, uh, to say that Tropicana's been very responsible in what they've done, that's why we moved forward. And I think the whole committee, they can speak for themselves, they're very impressive what they wanted to do. And I think everyone was being happy with what they wanted to do.
And Mr. Cunningham, um, I met with, uh, Mr. Calendar, the, the general manager of Tropicana. And it was saying with the various approvals that they need, um, you know, to get that done. If we can expedite, you know, the best of ability to process of getting things approved from the state to the city within that window, it'd be a help. So they can move forward and get it done.
Not a problem.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivid?
Yes.
And Small.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nine in the affirmative. We have resolution four fifty two, pulled by Councilman Gilliam, this is entering the mandatory agreement with federal girl investigation, new work, and has been in Atlantic City department.
Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Move by Chabaz.
Second.
Second by Randall.
Yeah. Okay.
Especially...
She's trying to come up.
While this is coming up, Mr. President, let me just, uh, say, the public works, uh, has been very active in the third ward, cutting locks and all. I just wanted to commend, uh, Director Jerkins and his work.
Hey, listen, this, this, this isn't a, a, an infomotion, paid for by Chabaz.
Yes, sir, I apologize.
It's two years away, man.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Cheer.
Did we, did we have to do a resolution?
Yes, to accept this, to accept the grant.
That was his question. Hey, I was saying, you got to walk up.
We just wanted to see you walk up.
So this is a grant?
Yes. For, it's a reimbursable grant.
How much?
Two hundred and seventy thousand. The city has to put the money up for it, to be reimbursed by the federal bank. It's a hundred percent reimbursable?
A hundred percent.
Leave all in the tour.
What is that?
Leave all in the tour. Frank the check.
The BA said he was going to take that.
Thank you, chief.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivid?
Yes.
And Small.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. And we have resolution four eighty three, pulled by Councilman Tivid, and this is for the contract to Mazer Consulting.
Move it, second.
Move by Chabaz, second by Gilliam.
Yeah, Council President, um, I have no problem with Mazer, Mazer does good work, you know, dealt one in the private role as well. Over my life, thirty, thirty-one years, there's not many architects that I haven't dealt with buying and selling jobs here. And one thing in Atlantic City, whenever any type of landscaping, parking lots, where you needed an architectural engineer involved. The name Bob Preston was the first name to pop up, no matter what the contractor was, and Bob Preston worked for us. I don't know why one of the go-to people in Atlantic County, Mr. Preston used to be, when he was in private practice, works for us now. Why he's not doing this? And take that thirty-one thousand and put it to a program that, um, that needs money, that we don't have the money to fund. I have nothing against Mazer at all, it could be A, B, or C in his contract. But Mr. Preston is one of the best in the industry that does this, and he works for us. And I just want to know why we can't have Mr. Preston do this.
Councilman, you're correct, the only thing is Mr. Preston is out now.
For good?
No, not for good, he's out on extended leave.
Send him some homework.
I, I do agree with you.
I mean, you, when you have some of the well-known go-to people.
I disagree with you, but...
It's the first time this has come up.
But Houston Avenue has, has been a, a area that has...
I agree, it's a hellhole, it has never had nothing, it needs to be done, I, I agree with all that. I'm happy to see it getting some attention, but I'm just saying, you know, when, there's programs that are getting cut money, and we got one of the, one of the best in the area working for us, that we stole ten years ago.
I agree, Mr. Preston's done excellent work. The, the only reason that this is on is, is because we wanted to jumpstart the progress, because the people in that area deserve, uh, attention and resources. Mr. Preston was here, you're right, which probably handed off Mr. Preston, and I think it makes sense. Because of the situation, Mr. Preston's going to be out for a while.
He was actually hired by Mayor Adams, right?
I'm not sure.
I'm pretty sure, man, that's what...
Don't forget summer's almost over, by the time this goes out, the bid and everything, and Mr. Preston will be back, and you put thirty-one thousand dollars into more equipment on the playground. Give it to the playground, give it to the project instead of giving it to a professional.
But when you're starting out, you'll be farther down the line.
But I'll take that thirty-one for M.L. Cave.
Well, listen, I'll take this thirty-nine for Indian Avenue Park, Mr. Wood, yeah, but I think we need to, the first, so I'll call it.
I played the, the, the other day for the winner, so...
Chang?
Uh, yes.
Delgado?
He wore it down.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
One to start.
It was Chang.
Yes.
Tivid?
No.
And Small.
Yes.
Not against the playground, against wasting money.
Seven in the affirmative, two in the negative. The president, that brings us to executive session.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Move by Chabaz, second by Randall.
One second, I need to amend to the, uh, resolution based upon Councilman Gilliam, not, uh, Councilman Tivitt's, uh, question earlier, I'd like to amend executive session to include session of B and B parking.
Okay, Council Vice President, we are, um, back on the record, and we have a few resolutions here, and we're assessing after executive session.
I'd like to make the most of the group those.
Second.
Move by Gilliam, second by Tivitt.
Okay, so we'll be voting on resolution four sixty-two, and that's a settlement for E. Williams. Four sixty-three is a settlement for E. Butler. Four sixty-four is being pulled, four eighty-one, and that is a settlement for Trump Entertainment Resorts. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes, I'm in.
Uh, Gilliam?
Yes, Mr. President.
Kurtz?
Yes.
I'm here.
Marsh?
Small, yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small.
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second, sir.